Good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the August 24th, 2021 Board of Selectmen meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes, all five selectmen present.
Um, let's see, Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Muniz.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcements, I will start with you, Mr. Slavin.
Just one simple announcement, I'd like to thank Patrick McDonald, who is our Emergency Management Director. He also took over in the border health area for Bob. And as soon as that happened, we have a hurricane alert. And I hope people realize what a wonderful job they did pre-preparing. If the hurricane had hit us, they were in full setup for everything we needed. Thank the police department, all the first responders for all the stuff that was put in place. It went smoothly, and we had no issues, thankfully. And just, again, just thank you for the great work. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Muniz?
Good.
Thank you. Mr. Titlebaum? The records show that Mr. Bowen is also present.
Yep, 6:33. Uh, yeah, a couple of things. Uh, yeah, we were lucky, we dodged a bullet with that tropical storm. My concern is that in an age of forecasting, where they start trying to tell you a week out when the, where the storm might hit, and then it goes 100 miles the other way, and you don't get that many impacts, I hope people aren't fooled by that. Because if this town gets lit up by a category two or category three hurricane, it's not going to be what we saw this weekend. You're going to see trees down all over the place, you're not going to have powerful weeks, there's going to be destroyed homes, there's going to be boats washed up on roads. These storms are no joke. So I just hope people don't think that, you know, just because this seemed to be overhyped, that they could ignore warnings the next time. Uh, the second thing is, you know, on a national level, what's going on in Afghanistan? Uh, it's a 20-year war. Initially, it was, you know, designed to try to eliminate Al Qaeda, turned into war against the Taliban, turned into nation-building. And I feel badly for the families of the several thousand US troops, and contractors, and aid workers, and so on and so forth, who lost their lives. Uh, I just want those people to know that what they did wasn't in vain, it did help protect us. And just because the nation-building effort didn't work out, doesn't mean that the campaign was a total waste. So I think we should acknowledge that sacrifice.
Thank you. You all set?
I'm all set.
You all set? Okay. Um, the only announcements that I have are that we canceled the executive session, and so we are simply going to start the meeting and just roll on down. Citizens' comments, does anyone choose to address the board? No? Thank you. Board comments, Mr. Muniz.
Um, I do a tour of the, uh...
Come on, turn it on, Jim.
I mean, let me move it up here, Bob. Better?
Better.
Um, we were invited to do a tour of the new elementary school, and I went there, and I must say, it's pretty spectacular. A great job, um, doing some finishing up, and some finishing touches in some of the areas. Great job by everybody, and very impressive. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Titlebaum?
None, thank you.
Mr. Slavin?
Uh, again, just one thing, I happened to notice this past weekend and the last couple of weekends, I'd like to thank everybody for basically eating out and using the local restaurants and stuff. Actually, this past weekend, there were lines everywhere. Biggest problem for most of our restaurants, and even the stores, is help. And you'll notice that a lot of the places are on reduced hours, or actually closed a couple of days a week. So again, if you continue to, you know, shop locally, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Mr.?
Me?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm all set.
You're all set.
I've been out ill, so I haven't been doing much.
I don't think your mic's on, Jim.
It's on.
It's on.
It's on.
Okay, I only have a couple of things. One of them is that we, this board, needs to establish a bylaw review committee, and so I'm going to put that on the agenda for the 6th, which is the next time we will be meeting. Um, and Mr. Muniz had, in his list of 17, as opposed to three, come up with reviewing policies, which is Board of Selectmen policies, which is something that Mr. Slavin introduced me to, I think in 2013. I, I happened to come across a, um, a policy from 1991, which was renovated, if you will, in 1993. And I can't believe that it complies with the law. So we really have some work that needs to be done on our policies. I know that you had said that before, um, so, um, I'm, I'm not sure how we're going to address that, but it needs to be addressed. Good news is that, starting on the 6th, this board will be meeting remotely. Until all of the burps are taken care of, in terms of hybrid meetings, I'm not willing to have confusion and people not able to speak, people not able to hear, I'm just not going to do it. So the next meeting will be fully remote, and if and when the equipment and the manpower is here to do a hybrid meeting, we will do that. Also, the Selectmen's Office has been working very hard to put together the annual report. And I have to say that, um, there are only a couple of boards or committees that have not submitted their annual report. In the past, it's been, oh, you didn't submit it, we're not putting it in. This year, you're getting nagging, or gentle reminders from the chair. And, uh, so we, we are, we're well over our deadline of July 30th, but we hope to be able to send that to the printer in the next couple of weeks.
Madam Chairman, is that a threat to identify the recalcitrant boards at the next meeting?
Yep. And it's not just boards, it's town departments, so...
Prepare to be shamed.
Yeah, prepare to be shamed. Did I talk about closed caption? Yep? No. WCTV has purchased the software, or the hardware, I'm not sure, to do closed caption on all of the PEG broadcasting that they do. That will probably be available next week. So closed caption will be available, and WCTV is learning how to use it and, and getting that done. So... Um, hmm 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 hmm. Is somebody from Seekers here? No. Okay. Um, what if we go to town business and ratify the hiring of those individuals?
Okey.
Please.
I don't want to say...
Going to try and jump around, so that I know a couple of people for the solar bylaw or other...
Okey dokey.
...things were invited to come, and I want to give them the opportunity.
All right, there's a couple in here, so let's see. Okay. Uh, the conditional offers have been made.
They're right on the...
I got them right here. I got them right here on the sheet.
Okay.
What, did you add something else that's not here?
I don't know.
No, they're all here.
Okay.
All right, so David Bowsfield, HEO, uh, for municipal maintenance, Russell Johannes, part-time transfer station laborer, Andrew Prunier.
Prunier.
That's pretty...
Prunier.
Prunier. Okay. Laborer of the Water Pollution Control Facility, Joseph Hansen, laborer of Water Pollution Control Facility, Joseph Callahan, laborer of municipal maintenance. Uh, let's see, and the last one is Brandon Monroe.
Marino.
Marino?
Yeah.
Uh, pa- uh, pandemic, uh, excuse me, paramedic for the WM EMS.
That was your motion, and may I have a second?
That's my motion.
Okay, second.
Motion made by Mr. Tropiano and seconded by Mr. Titlebaum to ratify all of those hirings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstaining? Did you say, did you say aye?
No.
Okay. Uh, 5-0-0, okay. Um, let's go to the quarterly review of the constable remittance, which is item 11D.
Okay. Here we go.
We have shortened up, um, the paperwork requirements on this, and I think it's a much cleaner presentation, um, and not nearly as wasteful in terms of paper. So if you would turn to that. As you can see, what we have done is we've listed in alphabetical order the individuals who were appointed as constables, um, listed the date that we received the money, and on the top of the columns, it shows what the quarters are, the reporting quarter requirements. On the totally right-hand side, you will see the total for the first two quarters of the year, which starts January 1st, and this is through June 30th. So, um, there were two newly appointed constables in June, and that was noted on the report to basically explain why they had no, um, remittances to us at that point. Are there any questions about this report?
Oh, very nice.
Thank you. You can thank Marie Garrity, she did a very nice job. Okay. Let's see, where else are we going to go? Um, da-da-da-da-da. May I have a confirmatory, I'm going to go to 11B. I need a confirmatory vote from what we did on August 10th, and it's right under 11B. If you just read it right off the agenda, we'll be all set.
Designated, uh, to designate Derek Sullivan, Town Administrator, as Environmental Certifying Officer for the CB, uh, CDBG purposes, with such designation to remain in effect until rescinded.
And it is a confirmatory vote from the Board of Selectmen meeting held on August 10th, 2021.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by, uh, Tropiano and Titlebaum. Any questions, concerns, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, thank you very much. Uh, let's see. Let's go to 11E, the information pages being added, added to the committee handbook, committee member handbook, which are toward the end. What I did hear was, um, because we have a lot of new members, and a lot of new chairman, and a lot of new clerks in our boards and commissions, um, and there have been some questions about open meeting law violations, I went to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts website and basically copied and pasted what it said, the responsibilities of the chair and the clerk of any board or committee should be. And then I went further, and I went into Mass General Law Chapter 38, Section 28, and copied the entire quotation about what members of a committee are expected to do, which is play by the rules. Um, so I'd like to have these two pages inserted. We had them in front of us last week, um, and I didn't get any further comments from any of you, so...
So moved.
I have a motion to include them, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion?
Um, yeah, I think, um, related to the responsibility of making sure members are, um, are up to date on their, um, what is it, the open meeting law?
And their ethics.
And the ethics. Um, that is, those records are held by the clerk. And, um, I think somehow it has to come out of there, and it shouldn't be the clerk of the town. And it's not the clerk of the committees who hold the records and, and, um, are responsible for that. I, I don't think we should be moving that over to the clerks of the individual committees. Should be either the clerk of the town, or the, um, appointing authorities, whether it be the select board, and, you know, administrators, or the appointing, um, authority of the town. That's my, um, opinion on that. Other than that, I didn't have any problems with it, and I did mention that to you.
Yes, you did. Um, I'm going to have Mr. Bowen speak to the issue of the keeper of the records as opposed to a member of a committee, a board and committee. The keeper of the records is responsible for, the, the town clerk, is responsible for keeping the records available that are given to him or her. But it is not up to him or her to chase getting those documents, am I correct?
That's correct.
Correct.
That was easy.
No, that was, no. Okay. Okay, succinct. Um, Mr. Titlebaum, do you want to speak to it?
Yeah, on that, I, I understand what Jim is saying, but, you know, I, I don't think that we're in a position to tell an elected official what to do with her job at this point. As far as, uh, you know, tracking, you know, the compliance with doing, especially the ethics thing, which you got to do every two years, uh, I mean, I know some of us didn't keep up with it. Um, it, it's something that, uh, you know, people just need to keep track of themselves. And I do think putting it in the hands of the chairman, yep, mine's on file too. Uh, I'm not going to say it always was. Uh, you know, it, it's really, I, I think, it's up to the individual, but I think the, I think the easiest way to, to make sure it happens is for the chairman periodically, maybe every fiscal year, you know, turn or something like that, the end of June, say, hey, you know, did you guys all turn in your ethics exam results? We, we all get perfect scores because you can't flunk it. It literally won't let you go to the next question until you get it right. I mean, you, you could train your dog to pass the thing, so it's, it's not exactly a big challenge to, to do, but it is something that should be done. Uh, because occasionally there are changes to it, and they incorporate those changes, so... But I, but I think every, you know, maybe, maybe that's the way to go about it, is for the committee chairman to, you know, June 30th, hey, do you people all have your things in, are you timely?
Or the clerk.
And new members, of course, have to, have to do it too.
Yeah. Yes, Mr. Muniz.
But someone should have a master list of, of who has and who has not completed, um...
The clerk has a master list of who has completed.
So send it out once a year, and then send it to the committees. You know, of, of...
I'll ask her if she...
Do you follow what I'm saying, so that...
Yeah, I can ask her if she would be willing to do that.
And if people who have not completed the online program and gotten their certificate, um, then they, they won't be reappointed until they have.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, otherwise, we're spinning our wheels here.
Well, but that's asking her to chase the people again, which is not her job.
Yeah, well, but if she's just, if she's sending simply information out, I don't think she would have a problem with that.
Yeah, if she sends it, well, that's up to her. I mean, you'll have to ask her if she wants to do that.
I will ask her, I can't make her, as you understand.
Right. As an elected official.
It's something we could ask for.
And next year, they become appointed, right?
Yes.
You can always, you could always request the information.
Yes.
When the charter is completely accepted by the legislature, then that position becomes appointed, however, she is entitled to serve out her term.
Correct.
Thank you.
Well, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. Um, just so that you all know, this is, um, minus these two pages that you just okayed. This is all online.
Mm-hmm.
Totally online. It includes all sorts of good stuff, um, and the good stuff includes the general information, like what types of boards, commissions, and committees there are, who makes the appointments and the reappointments, talks about the officers of the boards, committees, or commissions, talks about the conflict of interest law and the appearance of conflict disclosure, resignations, if you have a member who resigns, reappointments, the composition of the boards, and how, you know, um, doesn't list each board, but what a majority means, that kind of thing. The first meetings, um, and who sets the meetings, the finances of, um, any board or committee, and whether they have, in fact, any money, um, and payment of bills. Talk about the annual reports, the town reports, which I just mentioned. The town meeting, it has models, how to write up an article for a town meeting, um, and then it has an organization table with the conflict of interest law, the open meeting law, the public's records law, the access to town council, which is not available unless you go through the chair of this committee, or Derek Sullivan. The updated discrimination harassment policy, the social media policy, the internet usage policy, sample meeting notice forms, sample resignation forms. It, it's full of a lot of really good information. And I think that when people go to get their cards at the Board of Selectmen's Office, what they are being handed is not a copy of this book, because we're not going to print them, but it shows you where to access this document, which is, as I say, totally online. And then the individual will sign that he or she got a copy of this document. It's then up to John Smith to do what he's supposed to do, which is take the ethics test and do all of those kinds of things. So it's a lot, but I think it will help people understand exactly what the different roles of people and board members and chairs are. Any further questions? Okay. What did I do with my agenda? Okay, um, hmm hmm hmm. The solar bylaw committee. Ms. Nichols, we all know, um...
I can vote on that.
Ma- um, Mr. McHale cannot be here this evening because of a family illness. Linda Rinta, are you, oh, good, excellent. And the others are all, um, recommended by their respective boards or committees. So if it's okay with you, gentlemen, I will move to Article 9A, which would be the solar bylaw committee. And Ms. Rinta, if you would like to step forward and have a seat, and just tell us why you'd like to be on this committee. Thank you.
I'm going to have to bring it back.
Identify yourself for the record, and you probably should pull the mic really close, because speaking through a mask is tough.
How's that?
That's great, thank you.
My name is Linda Rinta. I, um, I live in, uh, 34 North Carver Road in West Wareham. I've been a farmer in this town for over 50 years. I, I've grew, grew up in this town, so I say I'm almost a lifetime member, I, I will be someday. But, um, uh, and I also have worked for USDA, writing farm plans for the last 25 years. Uh, before that, I wrote open space plans for several of our local communities, for Rochester, for Carver, for Millboro, for, or Kushner, I don't know all of them, but I... So I have a long history working in conservation, I've worked in conservation for 40 years. Um, more recently, I still, I'm 70, but I still work as a, a technical service provider for USDA, writing farm plans, for conservation plans for farms in Massachusetts and Rhode Island. And I know how important, uh, the opportunity to have small solar, or not just solar, renewable energy projects are to a farm. In fact, many times, particularly on small farms, they keep them farming. I have a project, in full disclosure, I have a project that I've been working on since 2016. I'm on my third solar developer, because it's really difficult to find one that will work for a small project. This is under 1 megawatt, which is pretty small, but it's difficult to find a developer who is willing to work with a small project when they don't make a lot of money. The one thing that I, and I, last year, uh, we've, after three years of being on the queue, that's the list. It's a, it's, it's a, it's not a linear list, it's a list that moves up and down. I, I was able to get my agreement with Eversource to purchase my less than 1 megawatt. And at that particular time, we harvested tall pine, um, as we do on our farm. I mean, it's a crop that's rotated, it's a 20-year rotation, but it's a crop that's rotated, to prepare for what I expected to be this, we're always expecting this next year, this next year, this next year, but, um, for an installation. And, uh, we, we aren't at the hearing stage yet, although we've had a preliminary walkthrough with the Conservation Commission, but it takes a long time for a small project. This one has been, I've had, I've been working with this particular company for four years, three years, to, just to get the agreement. Now, that agreement comes at a huge cost. There's several feasibility studies that have to be conducted, not the least of which is, the substation has to be evaluated for whether it can take my electricity or not. And then the upgrades have to be determined, and then we have to go out and fund the upgrades. And that was done, uh, last August, this time last year. It, it's a lengthy process. The economics of solar development do not favor small projects, I can tell you that. I am entirely sympathetic with the interest of the bylaw. I believe that in our town, they should be right-sided and right-sized for the location. But the way the bylaw was written is not going to stop the projects that I know are targeted by those complaints. It will bring mine to a screeching halt, and others like me, other small farms in this town, and there are four or five that I know of that are behind me in the queue. These are, can be farm-saving projects, and they're not big, and they're usual, in my case, it's taken me this long to come up with a company that was be willing to let me farm under the, under the panels, that would not disrupt our landscape, our farm landscape, that my neighbors would agree to, that wouldn't, wouldn't denigrate my This landing agreement that I have with Eversource is not mine, it belongs to the solar developer because it came at a huge cost. They had to pay for the upgrades, and it was in excess of $150,000, which I didn't They're not going to lose that. They're going to turn around and sell that, probably, to the company that is the big, the big, bigger developer, the biggest developer. Because they're not going to lose, lose that. What I'm certain of, from my experience working on a lot of farms, not just in Massachusetts, but in Rhode Island, is that, as written, you're not going to stop the big, large-scale projects that I, that I understand, and I'm very sympathetic to wanting some control, but you will stop the small ones.
I'm going to stop you right there, Ms. Rinta, thank you so much. Do any of you gentlemen have any questions of this young lady?
Hi, how are you today?
You notice I called you a young lady, despite the fact that you said you've been here for 50 years plus.
Have you been able to get any of the growers to actually form a group and come up with one project covering everybody?
Uh, that's, it's, you actually can't negotiate with Eversource that way. Uh, usually, it's done through their developer, and usually, you have to have your own, uh, there's, the, the company that I'm working with is called Interro, they're very small, and they have done a, they have a couple of others, uh, I don't know who some of the other ones are, but these are not the big companies.
I understand.
These are small companies.
But I know National Grid and Eversource make it as difficult as possible to process through, time-wise.
Agonizing.
Yeah. I might ask you to give me some information. I have a meeting, second week in September, I'm on, uh, Legislative Committee at the State House for Environment, et cetera, and we deal with, obviously, solar and other things. And I know there's been interest in trying to find ways to help the farmers who really can't survive under the current economic conditions, and the solar would be a nice piece for them, and the state has put a real hard push on, you know, alternative energy. And I'm just wondering if we can get a actual law passed that... And I'm just wondering if we can get an actual law passed that would go into the system that would allow you to do a group where they have to deal with you all as a group, and therefore the developer might be more apt to do it because instead of a one-megawatt unit, you might have a 10 or a 12 or more. So if you could forward me some information.
I certainly will. And there's a project just north of me in Carver that is a group.
I know that one.
Yeah.
So, like I say, my meeting is, excuse me, 14th of September.
I think that I would have something to offer to the committee. I understand that it might be from a different point of view, but.
Any, any other questions, Mr. Muniz?
No, no questions at all.
Thank you. Mr. Tropiano?
Nope. I appreciate that she has a different point of view, and I think that's the important part of what you have to say.
Mr. Titlebaum?
No, I can appreciate what the applicant is telling us about her circumstances and other similarly situated small farmers. And so I think she would be an excellent addition to the committee.
Excellent. Okay. I have no questions of you. Thank you. I will accept a motion to appoint those six people. We are still looking for a person-at-large, a citizen-at-large, a non-biased person who wants to spend time. And I'm going to ask Mr. Muniz to please call the first meeting to order after you get in touch with all of these people that we will be assigning tonight, and then start the first meeting off and then let them go forward, if that's okay with you. Do you mind doing that?
No, and I thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll do that even before we get the citizen-at-large, correct?
Yes, absolutely. We waited until we had populated from the other boards. Ms. Rinta, I'm going to ask that when you get sworn in, you go to the Selectments Office, you pick up a piece of paper, they give you a card, blah, 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 you go to the town clerk's office, she swears you in. I would suggest at that time that you disclose in writing that you are a farmer and that you, basically what you just said, and then you will have covered yourself in terms of the ethics problems that somebody might accuse you of. Okay? I will now accept a motion.
All right. I move we appoint the bylaw, solar bylaw committee as presented in the, in the agenda.
And it's, second, it will expire with the expiration and completion of the spring town meeting.
So we want to read off who the representatives are?
Sure. Jackie Nichols from the assessors, Carl Schultz, Planning Board, Nancy McHale, Local Conservation Group, Linda Rinta, Farmer/Solar Developer Representative, Ron Bessie, who is both, is Concom and possibly Open Space as well, and Christopher Conti from the ZBA. I have a motion and a second to appoint all of those individuals.
You do.
Do you have a question, Mr. Slaven?
No.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it is unanimous. I'm going to tell you that today is Tuesday. If you could make, if you could wait until Thursday morning to go to the office, we only have one individual, the others out on vacation, and so I just want to make sure that all of the paperwork is ready for you and all of the other members to pick up. And then expect to hear from Mr. Muniz. Is that all right?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Community Preservation Committee, let's do those.
Okay. Peter is the Preservation Committee.
Yeah, I got these two. Yep.
All right. All right. So we have Sam Corbett as a Planning Board rep and Linda Scharf as the Open Space Committee rep. I move that we appoint them to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2024.
And they are being placed on the Community Preservation Committee.
Yep.
I didn't ask if either one of them was here and wanted to speak. Do you choose to speak to us? Okay. Okay. Thank you so much.
Joan's here too. Joan Kennerberg from the Community Preservation.
She's not on.
No, I'm just saying.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. I have a motion and a second to appoint those two individuals. Any further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it is unanimous. Thank you. Wareham Cultural Council, Jackson, are you here?
Jackson Gilman.
No, he's not.
Okay. Jackson is possibly one of the most awesome people I've ever met, so somebody make a motion.
I move we appoint Jackson Gilman to the Wareham Cultural Council terms by no later than June 30th, 2023.
He was recommended by, second, he was recommended by the Cultural Council.
And I just want to say that he'd actually put in his application a year ago, over a year ago, and it kind of fell through the cracks, but he's been going to the meetings anyhow, so.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. So all those in favor of appointing Jackson Gilman, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it is unanimous. Thank you. We have an appointment to the Library Board of Trustees, Margaret Price. Are you here?
Margaret Price, yep.
Okay.
I move we appoint her to, to the Library Board of Trustees to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2024.
Is there a second?
It takes care of the appointments.
Motion and a second to appoint Margaret Price to a term to expire June 30th, 2024, to the Library Board of Trustees. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it is unanimous.
So let's do license and permits. Let's do Seekers.
Is Seekers here yet?
No.
Oh, goodie. Could you come forward and have a seat?
Sure.
Thank you. And I can't remember your name.
I'm Diane.
Hi Diane, how are you?
I'm well, thank you.
Thank you for coming forward, and thank you for getting all your paperwork perfect.
Thank you.
And why don't you speak to why you chose to relocate to where you relocated? First of all, identify yourself for the record so that.
My name is Diane Ann Benson. I live in onset. For the last six years, we've been doing business as Seekers. We started in Wareham on Cranberry Highway at 3166 Cranberry Highway. That was in 2014 when we started the business here. We had to move out of there because the landlord wanted to put his family in there or sell it for a higher rent, and we moved to Buzzards Bay. We were in Buzzards Bay on Main Street, right across from the canal, for the past four and a half years. And the landlord evicted us because he wanted three times more rent. And so now we're back in Wareham again. And we're hoping to open soon. We have an upcycle business. We also do custom painting furniture. We have a wonderful gift shop there if people are looking for gifts, and we're ready to go.
Thank you. All of the paperwork was in order. There was one, the insurance binder had to be changed to the current address, and we took care of that, and I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Are you the, you're the place that used to have the chairs stacked?
Exactly. Yeah, that was us.
Okay. Awesome.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions of this young lady? No, sir?
No.
Okay. Gentlemen?
I move we approve the application of Seekers LLC, 3065 Cranberry Highway, 9E, for second-hand dealer license.
Second.
Yeah, it's Suite 9 in East Wareham. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it is unanimous. I believe that your permit would be ready tomorrow later afternoon, maybe?
I can pick that up where?
At the Selectments Office, which is on the third floor of the Town Hall.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for choosing to do business in Wareham.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Still have a little bit of time here. So that's all done, that's all done. You might as well do the CBG grant because we don't have to start the hearing right on time.
We can get the presentation.
We can get the presentation and then.
And then open the, well, you know what? If it's a public hearing, I think we probably should wait till the time is noticed in case somebody wants to hear the presentation.
What time is theirs? Oh, they're scheduled for 7:30.
7:30, and then the first dog hearing is 7:15.
Well, you got about seven minutes.
Okay. I'm going to do something.
About three minutes.
You got about three minutes. So we did start the meeting early. We did cancel the executive session, so we went right into our open session. And because probably some of you thought that we weren't going to get anywhere until, you know, quarter of seven or seven o'clock, I will now ask if there's anyone who wants to speak under citizens' comments. I see none.
Why don't you do some of the liaison stuff or something like that?
Yeah.
There's been a lot of questions about how the boards and committees in Wareham and other places, SO, et cetera, have, moving forward in order to have the citizens be able to participate. I mentioned several different organizations that I either chair or water directors on. As of today, the Mass Municipal Association and the Mass Select Ward Association has decided to stay with Zoom and continue at least through October due to the increase in the pandemic numbers, et cetera. They just feel, from a safety standpoint, having to go into Boston and stuff, which is usually how we do it, it's too much for a risk as right now, so they're going to stay that way. I chair the Serpent Commission, which covers 27 communities in Southeast Mass. I put out a, what they call a doodle poll today to all 57 members. And the simple question is, do you want to stay with Zoom only, or do you want to go with a system we put together about two months ago, which basically is a hybrid, which has what they call OWL, which is an option that allows you to basically broadcast, and you can actually see people. When they call in, they go on a screen, you can hear them, they can see. I'm going to say most likely the answer's going to be the hybrid. We don't get very many people at Serpent, and the public come in and ask questions at all. But the way we do the Selectments meetings and stuff, that really, we follow a little differently than that, so I'm hoping that we end up with a hybrid. We have enough equipment, and with the closed caption, it should be no issue. But again, that's up to the chair, and the board has to vote. And August was, has usually been a vacation month for a lot of organizations, a lot of committees, et cetera, so it was very quiet. Everything starts up September, and everybody that's involved with town meeting, et cetera, you need to get ready because September's here, and before you know it, the meeting is here. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to say again, I know that the numbers are spiking in terms of the COVID infections, and something like 30-some-odd percent of the people who are getting COVID right now are actually double vaccinated. They've already been fully vaccinated. So all town buildings require full masks at all times, and I'm just going to remind you all that a full mask means you don't have to cover your eyes, but your nose and your mouth, okay? I'm now going to call for a 7:15 dog hearing, and before I do that, I'd like to have Mr. Buckminster and our newest individual, Eva Golden, step forward so that we can be introduced to you. I asked Mr. Buckminster to introduce Eva Golden, as she is a new employee, I'm not sure how new, and these are her first two dog hearings, and so we wanted to get a minute to talk with you. Go ahead.
I'm smiling under this mask. I just, I'm, I.
Can you identify yourself for the record, sir?
Yes, Gary Buckminster, Director of Natural Resources for the town of Wareham. I just would like to take a moment to introduce Eva Golden. She's our new Natural Resource Officer, not new, since October. She spent quite a few months in the Police Academy. She's a graduate of UNH. She graduated number two in the Police Academy of 37 officers. She also received the 100% Award for 100%, every time she go, went out there, and for just standing up to everything going on and what they threw at, they throw at you for the Police Academy, and she absolutely nailed it. So we have an outstanding employee with us, and very honored to introduce her to you guys, so.
Thank you. Do you have anything you'd like to say to this austere group? Pull the mic forward to you, please. Thanks.
It's nice to meet everybody and happy to be here.
Great. Any questions, gentlemen?
Interesting, interesting enough, my wife's an alumnus of UNH. Little, little before you, but she's an alumnus.
Okay. All right. As in past practice, I'm going to call a hearing to order, and Mr. Titlebaum is going to be running the hearing because he's really good at it. So I would entertain a motion to open the dog hearing on the case of Roebery.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second. It requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Muniz?
Yes.
Slaven, yes. Okay. The hearing is now open, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Titlebaum.
Okay. First, I'm going to read the complaint letter from the Department of Natural Resources into the record. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, complaint of vicious or barking dogs, General Laws, Chapter 140, Section 157, August 5th, 2021. I hereby make complaint hereon that the dog owned or harbored by Gerald Roebery, 1815th Avenue, Wareham, Mass. 02571, is dangerous by reason of aggression. On July 27th, 2021, at approximately 6:30 p.m., Mr. Frederick Oliveri was bitten by Duke, a male bloodhound belonging to the residence of 1815th Ave., Wareham. Mr. Oliveri was walking along the Wee Wee Antic River when Duke emerged from a wooded area between 13th and 15th Avenues. Duke then proceeded to repeatedly jump on Mr. Oliveri and was allegedly snapping at his neck. Mr. Oliveri punched Duke repeatedly in the muzzle and was then bitten in the right hand, resulting in two puncture wounds. A neighbor arrived on scene and was able to separate the dog from Mr. Oliveri with a wooden object. The owner of the dog, Mr. Gerald Roebery, arrived on scene and was able to take Duke back to his property by the scruff of his neck. Mr. Oliveri stated that Duke was off-leash with no collar at the time of the incident. Mr. Roebery's dog is unlicensed and unvaccinated. I am requesting a hearing to discuss the best options to address this issue. This complaint is made under the penalties of perjury. Natural Resources Officer Eva Golden, Wareham Department of Natural Resources, Law Enforcement Division. At this time, could everybody who intends to testify and the dog owners, please raise your right hands, so I know how many people there are? Okay. I'm going to swear in all the witnesses. That includes the DNR officers as well. Would you raise your right hands and repeat after me? Aye. State your name.
Aye, Eva Golden.
Do solemnly swear to tell the truth.
Do solemnly swear to tell the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
The truth.
So help me God.
Thank you, God.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to start with the Department of Natural Resources Officer, Ms. Golden. If you could, you know, if there's any information you'd like to add to your complaint, please, please add it. I would also note that the record provided to us has a picture of what appears to be a dog bite. It's identified as Frederick Oliveri, right hand, July 27th, 2021. This is available to any witnesses to look out as well.
All right. So I have my report.
I'm looking for it now.
You, closer to the mic.
Is that better?
Yeah.
So on July 29th, 2021, at approximately 10:20 a.m., myself, Natural Resource Officer Golden, and Animal Control Officer Gorbette Dill arrived at 1815th Ave., Wareham, to investigate a past dog bite incident involving a dog that lives at that residence. Officer Gorbette Dill had previously spoken to the victim, Frederick Oliveri, who stated he was attacked and bitten in the hand by a bloodhound between 13th and 15th Ave. on July 27th, 2021. ACO Gorbette Dill determined the dog to be, to belong to Gerald Roebery. The involved dog, Duke, was an unregistered male bloodhound colored black and tan with no vaccination history. Duke had left his property, his owner's property, and was off-leash at the time of the incident. Upon talking to the victim, he stated the following. On July 27th, 2021, approximately between 6:00 and 6:30 p.m., Frederick Oliveri was walking along the Wee Wee Antic River and was bitten on the hand by a dog that was off-leash. He stated that he was staying with his sister at 24 Highland Bay Drive. He was walking between 13th and 15th Avenues when a woman in a blue truck pulled up to him, stating that her dog had gotten loose, that his name was Duke, and that he was friendly and approachable. Mr. Oliveri states that about a minute after the truck drove away, a dog, later identified as a male bloodhound, Duke, appeared from a wooded section off of the road and began running toward Mr. Oliveri. Duke repeatedly jumped on Mr. Oliveri and appeared to be lunging for his neck. Mr. Oliveri states.
You probably want to show it to them.
That he had a cell phone in his right hand and was repeatedly punching Duke in the muzzle. This is when Duke bit Mr. Oliveri in the hand, causing two puncture wounds. After approximately three minutes, a neighbor, Pete Hempel, at 1713th Ave., was able to separate Duke from Mr. Oliveri after striking the dog with a blunt wooden object approximately four times. Mr. Roebery arrived on scene and took control of Duke, who was off-leash and did not have a collar on. and did not have a collar on. He did not make contact with Mr. Oliveri. Mr. Oliveri later went to Toby Hospital, where they started him on a course of rabies shots, and treated his puncture wounds on his right hand. Due to the nature of the incident, ACO Gorbette Dill and I issued a 10-day quarantine for Duke. In addition to the quarantine, I issued Citation Number 11575 to Gerald Robbery for the violation of MGL Chapter 140, Section 145B for unvaccinated, MGL Chapter 140, Section 137 unlicensed, and Wareham Bylaw, Division 8, Article 2, Section 2 leash violation. No further information is available at this time.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to call the dog owner to come up, please. If you'll just identify yourself for the record.
Gerald Robbery.
Okay, so this is, you've heard the report. I read the complaint letter into the record. The Department of Natural Resources Officer read her narrative version of what she wrote down into the record. We do have this picture of, of a bite. I don't know if you've seen this previously.
I have not.
You're, you're entitled to take a look at it if you'd like. I guess, at this point, what would you like to say about this? And if you-
You're not allowed to lie in this, right?
Excuse me?
There's no lying in that, right? Like, what she just read?
There's no what?
There's no lies allowed in that, right?
Well, if you have, if you have, if, if you don't agree with her narrative, now is your time to contest it, so.
Yeah. I approached him after the fact.
Excuse me, can you speak into the mic?
Yeah, you got to lean right forward into these mics.
Sorry, sorry.
Thank you.
Pick them up. It's noisy in here with the air conditioning.
I did approach him after the fact, and I said, I apologized and everything, and made sure he was all right, and talked to him and asked him what he would like me to do. Just like, man, just, I forget what he said, bang a post in the yard and attach him. He said I never even approached him, but I approached him and apologized and everything. My dog was vaccinated, by the way. I have proof and all that. My dog was not licensed. I got him licensed, of course, and paid the fine and all that. My dog's not aggressive. I'm sorry to say that, but he punched a dog and the dog bit. I don't know if that's allowed or not, but the dog was definitely not snapping at his neck. My dog is a one-year-old puppy, and he likes to jump. He might have been jumping, but I know for a fact. I have neighbors with little kids. He plays amazing with these, like, you know, I don't know. I have videos of the dog. He's obedient to me. He listens. He stays. I have video proof of that. I mean, I'm, little, I'm paying classes for him to get trained because he's a one-year-old puppy, and he is, does jump and all that, but I don't know. I have a scheduled next week to get, uh, classes for him, but I mean, I don't really.
Okay. Thank you. So you're disputing the version of the events. Did you-
I have a witness, too, by the way.
Okay, yep. Is that the gentleman back there?
Yeah.
Oh, is, is he a witness to the events, or is he sort of a character witness for the dog?
He's seen everything.
Okay. I'll have you come up, sir.
Barry Lake, Jr. I'm from Wareham.
Mm-hmm.
I saw the dog on the side of the road approach, I guess it is Olivera. He was running around, Mr. Olivera, barking at the dog and barking at the man. He did not jump on him, did not lunge at him. The man was down, swiping him in the face. I called the dog. I, I don't know where the dog got up and jumped on him. I don't know where that came from. I was there, and when I grabbed the dog from, he was probably three feet away from Mr. Olivera, but he was only barking. And the other gentleman with the stick came and started hitting the ground at the, at the dog. He did not hit the dog. That's what I saw.
Did you see any bite?
Um, I did not see a bite. He did tell me he was bit, but he was hitting the dog. The dog wasn't even, like, jumping on him or anything. So-
Okay, well, we clearly have two different versions of the story here.
That's what, exactly what I saw.
There's somebody in the back who-
Oh, there is?
I don't know.
Hi, I'm here on behalf of Mr. Olivera. I'm his attorney, so if you'd like me to testify and-
Uh, first, I got to swear you in.
That's fine.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye. State your name.
Aye, Susan Miller.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Tell the truth.
Tell the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth. So, so help me God.
Help me God.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, this is the time to offer testimony.
May I suggest that the two gentlemen go back to their seats for the time being, or go, yeah. And could you give the DNR officer the copy of the vaccination, please?
Okay, what would you like to tell us?
Obviously, I was not at the scene at the time. We met with Mr. Olivera pretty quickly after that. He stated that the woman who drove by had, as I understand it, she was in charge of the dog that day and did not have the dog leashed and let the dog loose, and the dog got out. He stated he had fought off the dog for three to five minutes before he was bitten. I would suggest that nobody would want to go through the process of getting rabies vaccinations if they hadn't been bitten. Toby Hospital clearly saw the bites. He was fully bandaged afterward. I think it would be important to have Mr. Hempel here. Obviously, he's not here. I don't want to get into too much of the legalities, but the bite itself, you know, under Massachusetts law, is strict liability. You bite someone, it's, it's not a matter of whether you're negligent or not. It's strict liability in Massachusetts. And my understanding is this is not the first time this dog has bitten, and that's my concern, is will it bite again? And that's what I wanted to bring forward. This is not the first bite for this dog.
Okay. Questions from the board?
Just one question. Could you again state your name for the record, because it wouldn't have been picked up from the back?
Sorry.
That's okay.
Attorney Susan Miller.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question before you go? So, do you have evidence that suggests that the dog had bitten before? Does the DNR have evidence that the dog has bitten before?
This was told to me when I received a call yesterday by Animal Control to find out if my client was going to appear.
So Animal Control told you that?
Yes.
Does, can, can you answer or respond to that, Animal Control, or DNR?
I'll have to confirm with Cheryl.
Yeah, that would have been Cheryl.
Okay.
Unfortunately, she had to go out today for the situation, so.
Should be in the record, though.
That should be some information. It should be here and in the record.
Yeah, and where it isn't, you know, it's actually kind of coming. It wasn't a hearsay since, so I, I think the board's going to have to-
Continue this.
Kind of stay off of that. Alan?
Well, if there's some evidence of being bitten before, we have nothing before us. I'm not sure the legal precedent, but I think we have to continue this till Cheryl's available.
No, we don't have to continue the hearing. It's just we don't have to consider that, that evidence in terms of what we do here.
Without that piece, it's extremely important.
I think that's an incredibly important piece of evidence, to have a dog that's out there.
We keep running into these things where we, we have information gaps. Well, what's the board's pleasure on this?
Where's the owner? Where is your client?
Mr. Olivera.
Mr. Olivera.
Hospital.
He's in the hospital?
Yes.
Not from this?
I don't believe so.
Oh, okay.
May I, I'd like to, is it a real bloodhound, or is it a bloodhound mix? So it's a low dog?
It's a, yeah, low.
It's low?
I don't know, not really. It's, he's a, he's a 100-pound dog. He's a tall dog.
Bloodhounds are not beagles. They're big boys. Oh, what, what are your, what are your thoughts? I'll ask, actually ask town council. I mean, I don't know that this is probative to the issue at hand any prior. It could have some bearing on how the board proceeds. So, what say you? Should, you think we should push this off and take it up until we have the Animal Control Officer available, or at least the doc, any prior documentation?
Well, Mr. Hearing Officer, in a proceeding of this type, the burden is on the prosecution to prove the case by at least a 50.1 standard.
Yeah.
You may accept hearsay evidence and give it the weight that you consider appropriate. You may decide to accept it. You may decide to partially credit it or reject it in its entirety. You should give precedential weight, well, not precedential weight, you should give more weight to precipitant witnesses, those being persons who actually saw the event occur. Naturally, you may evaluate their credibility as to whether they are telling you the truth or not, but in terms of the precedent, the precedence of reliability of evidence, it goes, people who saw what happened, people who listened to people who talked about what happened, and that's really about it. Then you have to fit that all into the situation where the burden of proof is on the prosecution, which in this case is Animal Control. Now, the, if the question is, should you continue this to get more information, you know, obviously, if there was a prior complaint about a bite that was lodged with you, that's something that you would take into account. So I think the question, the first question as to whether you would continue it would be, has this dog been before this board in the past? And I don't believe it has, since I think I've attended all of these for the last 10 years. So, that's what you've got.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll hear from the Department of Natural Resources, and then the dog owner would like to speak.
I, I spoke with, I just spoke with Cheryl. The dog, I, I believe Officer Campbell took a report back in June that the dog did bite another person. Is that correct to Mr. Robbery?
You were asked if the dog, there's a report that the dog bit somebody in June from the Department of Natural Resources.
And he said-
You would have to, you would have to come up and use the mic, please.
No.
Okay, he's, he's saying he doesn't know of any such incident.
Okay.
So I, I think we're kind of stuck here. I think it's important to hear, you know, in the context of the decision-making, I think it's important to get all the facts before us, before we make, before we make a determination about what to do about this.
I'd like, I have a couple of questions I'd like to ask.
But while, yeah, we could, we could, we can, we can go forward for a little while, but then I, I'd like a motion to continue.
Okay. May I ask the relationship between Mr. Robbery and Mr. Lake, his witness?
Um, I'm a clerk.
So you work for Mr. Robbery?
I do.
Thank you.
I'm a clerk.
I'm repeating, I'm repeating what he said. The gentleman said that he worked for Ms., he works for Mr. Robbery.
I work for the Robbery company.
Thank you.
Yep.
I, I'm not comfortable in going three weeks, which is, we're not meeting until September 6, without some kind of control of this dog. It, is the vaccination current? Was it current at the time?
It is, yeah. I don't know why our records weren't accurate.
Okay. So the dog was unvaccinated, or vaccinated but unlicensed, and the, the rules of the town of Wareham are pretty clear about how old the dog has to be before you license it. So-
We can, we can, we can issue a temporary order until the hearing is continued.
I'd like to ask him-
Depending upon the Department of Natural Resources recommendation for a temporary order to keep the dog on the property. It's got to be muzzled if taken off, you know, leash control, that sort of thing, until the, until the hearing continues.
I, does, I'd like to know whether there's a, a run, a, you know, a fenced-in area where this dog can be controlled. Could you, would you mind-
Well, we'll, we'll have you come back up, sir. Thank you.
I got to ask a question, too.
Thank you, Mr. Robbery.
Thank, uh, thank you. Yes, there is. I preview, I just recently bought a kennel for him, so he will no longer be on the run and cannot get out, even if, he doesn't even have to be leashed in this, because that's how he, he get off his, slipped out of his leash, so that's why he didn't have a call, or collar. That's why I didn't have one on. He had all his tags on that. But, um, yeah, I got, just got a kennel recently.
Can you describe the kennel, please, sir?
Uh, it's probably 15 by 10. Say like this corner of the room right here.
And the height? Is it six foot, eight foot?
Yeah, six foot.
Six foot, okay.
Yeah, bloodhound's not going to go over a six-foot fence.
Uh, he will literally not jump on my bed. He's a 100-pound dog.
Actually, town council has a couple of questions.
Thank you. Mr. Robbery, you say the dog is friendly but high-spirited because he's basically a little puppy.
Yes.
When he encounters a stranger, does he kind of run around and jump around and jump?
I mean, I have a video I could show you guys of him, like, encountering people. He's, he's a very playful, lovable dog.
Okay, that, that wasn't a video of the alleged incident?
No, no.
All right. So, um, did, did you see what happened?
I did not. I ju, I got a call and was there, basically. I was right up the road at my friend's house.
Do you think maybe, perhaps the gentleman was uncomfortable when he was trying to push the dog away, and that's when the dog bit?
I'm guessing. I mean, he, he said he was, I was talking to him that day, and he said he was like smacking him, and I mean, I don't know if the dude was scared of dogs or what, and that's why, but he's never been smacked before. I don't know if he thought he was in danger and snapped or stuff.
Do you have any doubt that the dog bit him?
What's that?
Do you have any doubt that the dog bit him?
For a good reason, yes. He does not bite people for no reason. I mean, I've never seen a dog bite anyone in my life. I've had the dog for a year. He's a playful dog. He jumps, like, he does jump, but-
So you think maybe Mr. Oliveri might have been a little hypersensitive, was hitting the dog-
That's what I would-
And then the dog bit him?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask the attorney-
Not, not even-
One more question?
Sorry.
Yes. Mr. Olivera's attorney?
No. Yes, Mr. Olivera's-
Go ahead, town council. We've got all kinds of lawyers.
Yes, I'd, I'd like Mr. Olivera's attorney back, please.
I want to ask a question. Can I jump in?
Yeah, go ahead.
One quick one.
Yeah.
Uh, DNR, I want to ask the DNR guys, you know, how did, when, when this, when the bite occurred, and, and, I mean, I think it's clear in the picture that the gentleman was bit, is, this gentleman then went to the hospital and had rabies shots. This is a terrible process, but yet it was vaccinated. I mean, and for some reason or the, that information wasn't forthcoming. Was there a reason why? Did you speak to Mr. Robbery afterwards?
I did not. Cheryl took most of the start of the case, and I took over for her.
Okay.
We get our records from the town clerk's office, so that's-
Yeah, right.
Just pull up on there.
But I mean, that's a shame, because this guy could have been saved a lot of pain. That's, I don't know if you know, but the shots are pretty, not pretty, you know, for, for, for rabies at all.
Sir, may I, I have, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
So my understanding is that with Mr. Oliveri, he ended up going right to the hospital after the attack and getting the shots without contacting either our department or the police, and then after he started the course of the rabies, then he contacted us.
Just so you know, I'm not blaming you guys for not, I just wanted to know if you had contacted him, and that there was no information exchanged or whatever, because that's, that's certainly very important information when somebody's got a dog bite.
The police apparently showed up, is my understanding. I could be mistaken.
Well-
Okay, I, I just, yeah, I do have a couple of questions for you, ma'am.
I can answer them.
Yes. Is Mr. Oliveri a senior citizen by any chance?
Nope.
Senior citizen, 55 or older?
Barely, yes.
Okay. Is Mr. Oliveri of average height and build?
I have not yet. I'm not the one who initially met with him.
Okay.
However, I, I, I want to say that I take issue with speculating by two people who, the attorney and, and-
Well, you know-
Mr. Robbery, as to what happened, to, to try to place blame on one or the other when neither were there. I don't think it's helpful at this point.
I'm all done.
Okay.
Motion to close the hearing?
Uh, no.
Oh, sorry.
Alan, do you have any, I'm going to go around the board. Alan, do you have any questions for the witnesses while we're here, because we're going to have to come back to this?
No, simply because I have, like, one side and the other side, and I can't make a decision because I don't know what really happened. You know, I'm not accusing anyone of not telling the truth or telling the truth, but I don't have any information to make a decision.
Okay, selectmen, unis.
The dog is up, is current on all the vaccinations and shots.
Yes, sir. I have a copy of the, this is the rabies.
Okay. And built an enclosure. That's good. Thank you for doing that.
Currently building a dog house.
I don't have any interest at this point in putting a dog down. I own a dog. I own a dog. But I do have a, an issue with the fact that if it's bitten before, that's something that should be taken into account.
We'll wait, we'll wait to hear that evidence when we come back to it.
Right. There should be written...
We don't need to be discussing it until it's before us.
There should be written evidence of that, if, if that's the case.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll, we'll ask for additional information from DNR on that. Any further questions?
I just have a comment. I am not comfortable without, I'll call it a temporary order, to make sure that this dog is under Mr. Robery's control at all times. And as a, as a three-week, you know, you gotta play, you gotta do this, and then if and when there's other evidence brought forward to us, we can continue on a, perhaps a different path.
I'll make, I'll make a motion on that, temporary motion.
Yeah, can you hold on?
Did the dog be on...
You gotta wait, we gotta go out of executive...
Get out of the hearing.
Okay. We gotta go out of the hearing. So we'll, we'll take a motion to continue the hearing. What's, what's your next date?
Six.
To September 6th?
7th.
Yeah, I just want to say one thing, for me, and I look at these things a little different than maybe some people do, but it's quite evident to me by the photograph and by the investigation that the dog did bite the gentleman, for whatever reason, whatever reason it was. So in keeping with that, I think it's important for us to put some controls in place until we actually hear from the gentleman himself, because I want to hear from him, because I think that's the missing piece. And that's the way I look at it right now. So I'd like to, like to do the same, okay?
I would ask DNR for recommendations for a temporary order.
Yes, sir. So I have...
Close the hearing?
Continue. We're gonna continue.
Continue it, yeah.
Motion to continue the hearing until September 7th.
So made.
Second.
Yeah, okay. You got a roll call vote on that one.
Slaven, Minis?
Yes.
Yes.
Patrick, yes.
Yes, okay. The, we will continue until September 7th. Now we're going to...
Now we can issue the temporary order or debate that.
So I have, when not under direct control of a controlling person, the dog shall be contained within a building, vehicle, or secure and locked enclosure. The dog may only leave owner's property accompanied by a controlling person on a leash of not more than four feet, having a minimum tensile strength of 300 pounds, and used in conjunction with a muzzle. And then it's the behavioral training, but it sounds like you're already undergoing the training, so that's excellent.
Well, that would, that would be something we would issue in a final order of training. It's just the control of the dog in between the hearings.
Correct. I agree.
So are those three measures that she recited amenable?
Yes, sir.
A person of 18 years of age to walk it?
Yeah, make it 18 years of age.
Someone of being able to control the animal.
He walks pretty good. He's always at the canal.
Second.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, he can't talk anymore, by the way.
Okay.
So moved in a second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All those in favor of what has been read into the record, which is a temporary situation until the 7th, when we will continue the hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. It is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Yeah, just one, just one final comment to the dog owner. You know, these, you know, it's incumbent upon you to keep the dog under control until we have you back here.
Period.
Yeah, period.
You know, these, these are binding orders. They're temporary, but, you know, they're good, they're good until we take up the matter again. You got a big, strong dog.
Oh, yeah.
I've got your, I've always had German Shepherds. They're big, strong dogs, too, so, you know, you're gonna have to get control of them because they have minds of their own and they do things that are sometimes unpredictable.
Now I'm going to open the hearing of the dog owned by Emily Lunetta. May I have a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
May I have a second to open the hearing?
Second, Peter.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call vote, Slaven? Minis?
Yes.
Whiteside, yes.
Tropiano, yes.
Titlebaum, yes.
Yes.
I'm going to turn the hearing over to Mr. Titlebaum.
Okay, let's see. The complaint letter on this one states as follows, Commonwealth, Massachusetts, complaint of vicious, barking dogs, General laws, Chapter 140, Section 157, August 5th, 2021. I hereby make complaint hereon that the dog owned or harbored by Emily Lunetta, 28 Highland Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, is dangerous by reason of aggression. On July 28th, 2021, at approximately 6:00 p.m., Linda Gautier was bitten by a dog named Bishop, a one-year-old male spaniel mix belonging to Emily Lunetta. Ms. Gautier was walking her dog Ruby, a one-year-old female German Shepherd, in a meetup group that regularly walks their dogs around Wareham Crossing. Both Bishop and Ruby were on leash and under control of their respective owners when Ruby began growling at Bishop in front of the Home Goods store. Bishop then broke three of his metal prong collar and attacked Ruby, biting her neck and front leg, causing a laceration injury to her front leg. Ms. Gautier was attempting to separate her dog Ruby from Bishop when Bishop bit both her left and right hands, causing injuries to her left hand and wrist and her right thumb. After the dogs were separated, Mrs. Gautier visited the urgent care in the plaza where her injuries were treated. Ruby was later treated by a veterinarian for the laceration to her front leg. I am requesting a hearing to discuss measures to be taken that will address this issue. This complaint is made under the penalties of perjury. Natural Resources Officer Eva Golden, Wareham DNR, Law Enforcement Division. Once again, if all the people who intend to testify would stand up, so I can get you sworn in. Please raise your right hands, repeat after me. I state your name.
I can't.
You solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
Tell the truth.
Tell the truth.
The whole truth.
The truth.
And nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Help me God.
Thank you very much. I will now hear the testimony from the Department of Natural Resources.
Yes, sir. So I have my narrative as well. On July 28th, 2021, at approximately 6:00 p.m., Linda Gautier was walking her dog Ruby, a one-year-old female German Shepherd, in a meetup dog-walking group known as the Wareham Pack Walkers. The group regularly meets at Wareham Crossing to walk their dogs around 5:30 p.m. during the week. After being together for about 30 minutes, the group had stopped in front of the Home Goods store. Jane Swoboda, who was walking her dog in the group, stated that she witnessed Ruby growling at a dog named Bishop, a one-year-old male spaniel mix owned by Emily Lunetta. Bishop began growling back at Ruby and then snapped at his sibling, another dog that was being walked in the group. Bishop did not bite his sibling and was under control of Ms. Lunetta. All three dogs were on leash at this time. After a short period of time, Bishop broke free from his metal prong collar and attacked Ruby, biting her neck and leg. This resulted in a laceration on her front left leg. Mrs. Gautier attempted to separate Bishop from Ruby, and in doing so, was bitten on her left hand and right thumb by Bishop. Earl Gautier, husband of Linda Gautier and co-owner of Ruby, was bitten by Ruby in the hand when he attempted to separate Ruby and Bishop. Ms. Swoboda was able to separate Bishop from Ms. Gautier and Ruby, and no further incidents occurred after Ms. Lunetta regained control of Bishop. Mrs. Gautier and her husband, Earl, both went to urgent care located in Wareham Crossing Plaza and were treated for their injuries. They then took Ruby to the veterinarian where she received treatment for her wounds. This is the first incident with Bishop on record. Due to the nature of the incident, Animal Control Officer Gervet Dill issued a 10-day quarantine for Bishop. No further information's available at this time.
Okay, then, let's see. Would the owner of the dog, if they're here, please come up? So at least in this instance, we have an owner who was present when the incident happened?
Yes.
You heard what the Department of Natural Resources officer just read into the record. Do you agree with what is contained in her report?
Can you identify yourself for the record first?
My name is Emily Lunetta. I agree with most of it. Bishop was lunged at three times by this one dog in a very short amount of time. Lunged, and then everything's fine. Lunged at again. He gave her a warning growl. He didn't just snap. He gave her, he looked at the other dog and he gave her a warning growl, and I corrected him immediately, and I, you know, I took his prong collar and I did two pulls and, uh-uh. And then he sat down and looked at me, and he was fine. But very quickly after that, the other dog lunged and barked again with teeth bared. She was on her hind legs, and at that point, my dog did react. This was the third time he was lunged at by this one dog. He did react by lunging back, and when I tried to correct him, his collar broke. He did not wrench his collar from me. He did not break free from his collar. His collar broke.
Questions on the board? Alan?
I have a different little question to start with. Last name is Lunetta?
Yes.
I'm just gonna ask, because there may be an appearance of conflict for me. I used to be extremely friendly with a Lou Lunetta over in Hamilton Beach. They came out of Boston. They used to summer here.
I'm not familiar with Lou Lunetta.
Thank you. No questions.
Thank you. Jim?
And that's, and that would just be questions for this witness at this point. Yeah, yeah. No, no.
Thank you. Judy?
I do, yeah. You're telling me that a dog broke a pronged collar?
No. What I'm saying is that the prong collar broke, not that my dog broke the collar. The collar snapped. It was a quick-release collar, so the collar had a malfunction.
How many times had you walked the dog with that collar? I mean, like, a week's worth?
200.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Any, any more questions, Judy? Patrick?
Yeah, no, I want to hear more of the case, also.
Yeah, I don't have anything, the details seem pretty much the same to me. At this point, is the dog owner available? The dog owner, well, you are the dog owner, I'm sorry. Is the, is the alleged victim dog owner, the alleged vic, they're not here?
We made contacts, everyone.
Okay. Well, at this point, I guess you're all here as character witnesses for, for this dog.
I have a witness to the event, not just the character event.
You have a witness to the event? Oh, even better.
Yes.
Okay, we'll have, we'll have that young lady come up and identify herself and give her testimony now. If you'll just tell us who you are and what you saw.
My name is Jane Swoboda. I was the one cited in the, the report from...
I'm gonna have to ask you to really get up close and friendly with this thing because the air conditioners make it hard to...
No worries. My name is Jane Swoboda. I was the one cited in the report.
Yep.
Cheryl got things a little bit confused in that report. What happened was, it was a pack walk. We get together, as she said, a couple times a week, and it was right after a heat spell, so we had a lot of dogs that, which was kind of nice. There was a little incident beforehand. Ruby was lunging and snapping, trying to get to Bishop, and Bishop couldn't, so instead of yelling at Ruby, he yelled at his brother. That was one incident. I then took his brother on the walk. We made it about 200 yards, and we all stopped outside of Home Goods because we take turns going in. And at that point, Emily was to my right, Lou, Ruby was behind Bishop. Bishop was just sitting fine. Ruby then goes, gets on her hind legs and barks and snaps at him. Emily hears her dog growl in response. Emily quickly corrected the dog, both physically and with her voice. The owner owners, Ruby's owners, said the name Ruby. That's it. No correction at all. Not good, not bad, no correction. Happened the second time. This time, though, Bishop said, if she gets to stand up on her legs, I get to stand up on mine. He goes to stand up on hers, the prong collar released. It is a quick-release collar. That is one of three dogs that night that broke the collar and released the collar. My dog was one of the ones of the three dogs that got loose that night on the walk because of the collar. Ruby got loose because of that same collar. We're now asking people to not use those collars. I feel, since I watched it, Ruby was more the aggressor. Bishop was defending himself and protecting his mother. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll have you come up. Thank you.
She did. Hi. Jennifer Cipriani.
Pull it in tight, please, the mic. Yeah, you've got to get it real close, because...
Hi.
Pretty much.
Jennifer Cipriani, I'm Bishop's trainer.
Yep.
I run the pack walks at Wareham Crossing, among other things that we do. The dog, what it basically boils down to is an owner who got a German Shepherd late in life as their first dog, have no idea how to control it, have no idea how to train it, zero effort at all. This dog is known to do three things at every dog: stare, bark, and then lunge with an open mouth. Every dog. We've told the owner not to do this. We've told them to correct it. We've told them to stop it, because she was gonna find a dog that wasn't gonna put up with it. And they found one, unfortunately.
Okay.
But they, they got bit because they reached in, because they had no idea what else to do. Now, as a dog owner or trainer, you don't reach into a dog's open mouth. You just don't do it. But they reached in and got bit. So the immediate result of that was, yeah, they're gonna get hurt. It's a German Shepherd. So that's really all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. And I think we had one more person who wished to testify.
I live next door to Emily. I have two puppies of my own that play with Bishop, and we actually, we go on walks with Bishop as well. He has never been aggressive. He's always just been a playful little puppy.
Okay, thank you. I just, I have one question. How big is Bishop? Spaniel mix doesn't sound like it's much more than half the size of a German Shepherd to me, but...
Bishop is not a spaniel mix. Bishop is a shepherd lab.
Ah, okay.
So 50 pounds?
He's 75 pounds.
75 pounds.
Okay, so we had, we had two fairly sizable dogs going at it here. Okay, thank you. I'm hearing a dog fight here, folks? I'm not hearing something that really...
I, I agree, and, you know, that's probably something that's gonna happen when you go on group walks with dogs, and, you know, just some dogs aren't gonna like each other. And, you know, again, that's some of the issues you can have when you go on group walks with dogs. And, you know, I, I don't see, I don't see either dog as being overly aggressive, they're just dogs. I mean, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, to me, I think this, my thought is this should be dismissed. It's a garden variety dog fight. Like I say, I had two male German Shepherds at one time. One was absolutely the aggressor. The other one, even though he wasn't the aggressor, sometimes would get the better of the one who was. I would break up the dog fight, but I would make damn sure I grabbed the aggressor dog because I knew if I stuck my hands in and tried to grab the other dog, I'd get lit up by the aggressor dog. I'm big enough to grab a German Shepherd, and I literally threw one over my fence one time when he got out and I got aggravated with him. But, you know, the average person reaching in and breaking up a dog fight is not going to end well. That's just, you know, you've got dogs snapping at each other, snarling, and, you know, whatever's in front of them, they're biting. So I don't see that this is a case of a vicious dog that accosted a human on its own and did damage. I think we should just move to dismiss this.
I have a couple of questions I'd like to ask.
Please.
Are all of the dogs in your dog pack walk vaccinated and licensed, to your knowledge?
My knowledge--
Yeah, she said yes.
Okay, so the answer to my question is yes. Okay. Not until you are speaking to the mic.
Yep, come on up, please.
Sorry.
So we've had over 800 walks without incident. And this is the first time in five years that we've had a dog fight.
Thank you.
Yeah, ditch the prong collars and just go with a straight choker for the heart of the control dogs. And then you're going to have to teach people how to use those, too. They don't actually choke, as we know. You give them a little pop and, you know, snap their head, too, to say, hey, what was that? Just like their mother did when they were puppies and gave them a shake when they acted up.
We're reviewing our policy on prongs right now. We're not going to do easy, the quick releases anymore, so--
Yeah, I mean, if they're well-made, well-constructed, they're good with, you know, say, a rottweiler or something like that that's got fur on the floor, weighs 140 pounds, that could drag you down the street.
Doesn't need a lot of correction, yes.
But, you know, that's heavy-duty equipment. These dogs just need chokers and a good pop when they do something stupid. Is there anything else for these people?
One more question.
Yes.
Yeah. You alluded to the fact that the owner of the dog might benefit from training of the dog, or-- Who are-- Well, I'm not sure which, I don't remember which one you said.
I believe Ruby has gone through Petco, socialization, but it's the same. I know the trainer there, and it's the same attitude. I've offered to train with her. I've invited her to training. They just, they're inexperienced owners.
Okay, is there anything further?
I'm going to ask, how are you going to prevent this from happening in the future?
Literally, each owner is responsible for their dog. That's the way it works. We gather the people up. They are responsible for their dog. And if they can't control the dog, they're not allowed to come. Ruby will not come to walks anymore, ever. Thank you. I also have an answer for that. I've replaced my animal's collar. Obviously, he's not using a quick-release collar anymore. He's using a Strickland plated collar. So you physically have to take it apart. It's definitely a lot more work, but it's worth it. And also, for myself, being more cognizant if my dog gives me a signal that he wants to get away from something because someone is lunging or barking at him.
Thank you. I'm all set.
Okay, can we have a motion to dismiss this complaint?
We need to close the hearing.
Gary wants to say something. Okay.
May I just ask one question? I've followed the pack walkers for some time, too. It's a great organization. It's a good socialization skill for the animals. One concern is the property owner for that property is that it's utilized. Are they aware that that does go on, so they're okay with it? Okay, thank you.
We need to close the hearing first.
Okay.
Motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Slavin to move, close the hearing?
Yes.
Mr. Munez?
Yes.
Mrs. Whiteside, yes. Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
The hearing is now closed. I will entertain a motion.
I move we dismiss this complaint as it emanated from a simple dog fight.
Is there a second to that motion? Motion and second to dismiss the complaint. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstaining. It's 5-0-0.
Okay, thanks. You're free to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, everybody. Thank you to the DNR offices for coming tonight.
Ms. Buckminster?
Yeah, the CBG grant.
Thank you. And that's all we have left, right?
Yeah, yeah, and then the regular bony. But you know what I don't see here is, the proposal isn't really here. Hold on a minute. I move we open the public hearing for the 2021 Mass CDBG grant.
Second. Motion made and seconded to open the hearing. May I have a roll call vote, please? Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Munez?
Yes.
Mrs. Whiteside, yes. Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Mr. Titlebaum, yes. The hearing is now open.
Those are proposals.
Can you start it in the back?
I certainly can.
Thanks.
You know what the proposals are? I don't see them yet.
Yeah.
I don't see, no.
Yeah, it is.
It is? I didn't see it. It should be in here, but I don't see it in here either. I'm just looking for the proposals.
It's right here.
Yeah, let me have that.
We are sending around a sign-in sheet, please, and I take it that it calls for your name and address. Am I correct?
Uh, yes.
Please. So that we can show that there were people here? And when you're through with it, if you'll bring it back up, and we'll start it around this table.
We didn't have this information before I got here.
Would you identify yourself with the record, please?
Yes, I'm Jamie Redpan Buckminster. I work for Community Opportunities Group, which is the consultant that runs your CDBG program.
Closer. Thank you.
Is that all right?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so I just wanted to give a little bit of background information on this, and I can answer any questions anybody has. This is probably going to be a little bit of a review for last time, but I wanted to make sure the public hearing attendees understood everything that sort of goes on with this grant. And I'm actively trying to speak slower. Thank you. Okay, so the CDBG program, Community Development Block Grant, Wareham has been receiving these grants for about three decades. It's a federal grant program that's administered by the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development, or DHCD. And it has several different program funding components. Wareham has used the CDBG program to address a wide range of community needs: increasing literacy, support to food pantries, transportation subsidies, after-school programs, and then infrastructure projects such as the Streetscape Project downtown, and also improvements at the Agawam Village and Redwood Park housing complexes. Those are our affordable housing units. And we also operate a housing rehabilitation assistance program that helps low- and moderate-income families make needed repairs to their properties. Wareham is one of 11 mid-sized communities that DHCD has designated as mini-entitlement communities. This just means that Wareham demonstrates a high need and high distress. But fortunately for Wareham, that means that they don't have to, the town does not have to-- Excuse me, the town doesn't have to apply for its funds on a competitive basis right now. That can always change in the future. We do have to apply and meet all of DHCD's requirements and HUD requirements, but we are not in the competitive application pool. So as long as we do everything right, we will get the funds and we will be able to do the projects. As part of this update to the public, I have to talk about the currently active CDBG grants. So I'm going to do that first before we discuss what's on the docket for the current application, which is the FY21 application due September 10th. And just as a bit of background information, the CDBG program is tricky. It's, it can be strange and weird at times, for lack of a better term. We have to meet a national objective for every project, and those national objectives are one of three. You have to prove that the project is a benefit to low- and moderate-income persons, that it will prevent or eliminate slums or blight, and that is a definition of DHCD. And it is a result of prior studies that the town has done in certain areas. So it's not just that building's ugly, I want to do a project. It's very prescribed. And the third national objective is urgent or critical community need. It's reserved for natural disasters and things like that. It's not typically used. In addition to meeting a national objective, the projects must be eligible for CDBG funding, and there's a prescribed list of projects. And I'd be happy to get into more of that if anybody has any questions. So right now, I'd like to discuss the FY19 Mini Entitlement Plan Grant. That grant was for $825,000. We've been fortunate in the past few years to be able to apply for $825,000. In previous years before that, there were some times where they would only let us apply for 625, so it can change every year, but we've been holding steady, which is nice. So in 2019, we have a housing rehabilitation program. I'll talk more about that later. We did part of the Wareham Housing Authority roofs over at Redwood Park. We funded five social services, which were the max allowed for this grant. And we always list program delivery and general administration, which are our cost to administer the grant and pay salaries of the one-town-funded employee. Not town-funded, grant-funded employee, but she's an employee of your town. So not, she doesn't work for COG. The housing rehabilitation program is actually new to the FY19 grant, that $100,000. We were very lucky that, for whatever reason, the Housing Authority Roof Project, which we did as part of the FY18 grant and then finished up with FY19 funds, came in way below budget. I don't think that'll ever happen to us again, so I think we should relish in it. We were able to then reallocate $100,000 to the housing rehabilitation program. Previously, this grant did not have the housing rehabilitation program. So we're getting that started up now. It was recently that that budget amendment was approved by DHCD. The, excuse me, the Wareham Housing Authority Roof Project, that was for the replacement of the remaining five roofs. The FY18 grant did the first three roofs at Redwood Park, which is our elderly housing and disabled housing. This project's complete, and like I mentioned last time, we do have about $147,000 left still budgeted to that. So I will be possibly back before this election, if you'll have me, to discuss possible uses. You know, and I'm happy to have a small working group beforehand if you all would like to determine if there's a different activity or whether you'd like to go for more housing rehab units. That's up to you. It's your grant. Let's see here. And then the public social services, like I said, we did have five funded, and that's the max you could have, and up to 20% of the grant, which we did, which was $165,000. We did have, earlier this year, a small change in the budget there. GATRA has low ridership due to the pandemic. They weren't spending their funds as quickly. And they're also funded in the FY20 grant, which I'll get to next. So I was able to pull just a small amount, $1,300, to finish up what was the last of the Boys and Girls Club invoices. They're actually, they're December invoice. We operate a month to several months behind, unfortunately, not unfortunately, it's just the nature of the grant. So when they billed and they needed that extra funding, I found it. GATRA was fine with it. And then unfortunately, it was like two weeks later that I found out that the club had abruptly closed, so that was somewhat upsetting. We have provided public social services funds to the Boys and Girls Club for, since long before I've been here, and I've been in town for 10 years. So it was surprising, to say the least. We're on a little bit of delay with this, of course, due to the pandemic. We did have to shut down the housing rehab programs that were running in prior grants just because of the pandemic. The Housing Authority Roof Project was a little bit delayed. So we're expecting the FY19 grant to wrap up in 2022. And it's not unusual for us to have multiple grants sort of running at the same time. Does anybody have any questions about the FY19 grant? I'm, I, okay.
So what can they run, three years out, and they go to close?
DHCD is pretty understanding if we have a good reason to extend the grant, so there's really not a hard timeline there. They do want us to spend it as quickly as possible. So if they can see that we're having trouble, they'll say, whoa, whoa, what's going on? And, you know, if they could tell that we're having an issue, they could ask for us to return money. We haven't ever had to do that. Well, we haven't had to do that since I've been here.
Thank you.
So it's, as long as you have a good reason, our friends at DHCD are pretty supportive. And we try not to sit on the funds, anyway. This isn't, the way that CDBG works, as an aside, is you don't just get a check from, you know, for $825,000. It's a reimbursement. So we have to spend money to then ask for them to give us the funds back. So it's very, it's technical in that way. The FY20 grant, so we're currently finally completing the startup activities. The contract is what we like to say upstairs in Town Hall, making its rounds, getting the signatures for the grant management. That's what allows COG to work on the grant. As you know, we're already working on the grant. It's a procedural thing. Once that is done, DHCD will consider us completely started up, and we will be ready to go. One of the, I guess, stipulations as to when you apply for the next grant, they require that you have all the startup activities finished for the prior one that they've awarded. And that changes every year as to what they want done, but that's what they've done this year, is we had to have all the startup activities for FY20 completed. So all that said, this is what we've got going for FY, the FY20 grant. We funded housing rehabilitation at $158,000, more or less. We have the Bayview Park sidewalk replacement in onset. That's just on the bluffs with the gazebo in that area with the falling-down railing. And we funded, again, five public social services at $165,000. I'm going to get back to those in a minute. So the housing rehab program, again, it provides technical and financial assistance to low-income residents to make repairs to their homes. We put a 15-year lien on their property for the amount of the project. Every year, 1/15th of that loan gets forgiven. And after 15 years, it's completely forgiven. If they sell their property between, you know, having the project complete in 15 years, the town receives the money that has not, essentially, the town receives the money, the difference between what has not been forgiven and the amount of the loan. So that becomes program income, which can be confusing. But essentially, the town receives this, and we have to spend program income on other CDBG-related purposes. That's a simple definition. There's more on that later. If you have any questions about program income, I'm happy to answer them. Let's see. The Bayview Park sidewalks replacement, I'm working with Municipal Maintenance Director Dave Menard right now. We had a little snafu with the engineer we thought was going to be able to do the work. They sort of went dark on us. Dave has, Mr. Menard has his blessing to go and find a different engineer to deal with that. The engineering is paid out of Chapter 90 funds. Do you want, I can answer? Nope, this is 2020. You're right, it is last year's grant.
I turned your mic off.
I'm looking at last year's entitlement grant, and that was included in last year's.
Yes.
You're right. That's FY20 grant.
So it's doubled up? It required more?
Nope. That is, that's what we proposed for the FY20 grant. That is last--
Are you talking about FY20 or 21?
20. First, I'm reviewing the past two grants.
Okay, I thought you were talking about 21.
I understand. It's confusing. There's a lot of years and a lot of projects, and some of them are very similar.
Yeah, well, you know, we, okay.
Okay, I apologize. So this is, the Bayview Park sidewalks project is going to be beautiful. I'm very excited about it. As I said, Mr. Menard's working on the engineering right now, which he graciously paid for Chapter 90 funds, so we didn't have to pay for that out of the grant. And as soon as that's done, we'll be able to get moving on this. The public social services. We have an earmarked amount of $40,000 for youth services that was officially awarded to the Boys and Girls Club. It was before we were even able to start up this grant that we heard that the club was closing. So the town is going to have to make a decision about how to use that money, whether it's giving it to a different public service, you know, you can expand somebody else's allocation. You can give it to a completely new public service. If there's somebody else providing, you know, youth services in the town that could use the funds, or you can reprogram it completely and put it in a different budget line. That's up to the town. So I'd like to get a feel from everybody at some point, including Mr. Sullivan, as to what we might do with that money. And I think that's all I have to say about the FY20 grant. I hope to have a much better update next time I see you. update next time I see you. I hope everything will be launched and running smoothly. We're, we're very excited and, and waiting for your, just things to fall into place here. Does anybody have any questions on FY20? Anything I can answer now?
No.
Nope. So what I'm going to do now is I'm going to talk about the activities being considered for the FY21 grant, which is the one due September 10. So these projects are all within Wareham CDBG target area, or what's known as a slums and blight area. Wareham, as background information, I shared this a little bit last time, but for people who weren't here, Wareham has two designated slums and blights areas. And I just want everybody to understand that that's not our term, that's certainly not the town's term, and that's not what we think about those areas. That's a DHCD term. That is what it is. Basically, we had two slums and blight studies done, which looked at, it was a building-by-building inventory in a prescribed area. One was Wareham Village, the other was, was onset. And because there was a percentage of needs that were documented in those slums and blight studies, DHCD for 10 years allows us to designate those two separate areas as slums and blight areas, which means we can use that second national, national objective to spend CDBG funds, which I'll just tell you, makes it so much easier to spend money. It's, it's a, you know, you, you can tell that there's a need, but it's, it can be difficult to prove the first national objective, which is always benefit to low and moderate income households. So we're going to be able to get moving on some projects in both of those areas, and that's sort of what colored our ideas for this application. So first up, staying with the sort of theme here, Mr. Sullivan is, does want to invest in onset, and I think, I'm sure the board agrees, the Highland Avenue sidewalk replacement. We're proposing a sidewalk replacement project. We hope, we don't know yet how much work is going to really need to be done there. So we budgeted around $415,000. We still have engineering to do, but what we're looking to do is between onset Ave and Whittamore Street, which is the, the entire extension of Highland Avenue, is to replace the sidewalks and get rid of hazards. If you've walked down that street, you know that the sidewalks are narrow in many areas. They're hard to rock on. They're, they're old and deteriorating. Some of the curbing is good, not all of it is. So it's, it's going to be a, a great thing, I think, you know, even without the Boys and Girls Club and the Hammond School anymore. That's still a very active area with the pickleball courts and the public parking there, and we want to make sure people are safe. So that's going to be fun. We also are allocating funding for public services, again, $165,000 or 20% of the grant. We, we put out a request for proposals in July, seeking funding requests, and responses were due on August 16. Now, if you want to look at your second handout, which I just, I just dropped off tonight for the selectmen, it wasn't in your packet because we were still analyzing things. Public Social Services, we received fewer proposals this year than in typical years. Normally, we have more applications than we can fund. But in talking to our organizations that normally apply, and even some that just have similar needs, and I was just trying to poll people and say, you know, what's going on? And I've heard that, especially in terms of GATRA, who did not apply this year, they're just, they're having trouble spending their current funding, and they, you know, have identified ways to get through their budget cycle without using CDBG funding for this round. I respected that. I thought it was a responsible thing to do. That's what I heard from GATRA and other organizations. There's also the, the issue of, there's pandemic-related funding out there, the CARES Act, among other things, coming from the federal government, and people are going to use that one-time funding before worrying about getting applications out for other potentially one-time funding. Although sometimes with the CDBG program, like the Boys and Girls Club is lucky enough to receive funding every year because we can demonstrate a need, and they're very good at spending their money. That being said, we're recommending funding for the following three Public Social Services. The Family Pantry Damien's Place, which is, usually gets funding through our CDBG grants. They're going to get a little bit more this year. Same with Wareham Area Committee for the Homeless or the Turning Point Program. They both applied, and they have needs that they are still struggling to meet because of the pandemic, regardless of other pandemic-related funding. So we were actually happy that we could say, all right, you know, maybe we can help you out more this year. So for the Family Pantry Damien's Place, CDBG funding will assist the pantry in purchasing food and offset the salary cost of its single-paid employee, which is the warehouse slash pantry manager. A portion of the funding will also help them pay their warehouse rent. The Turning Point Program, grant funding will support the salary of the organization's program coordinator. They actually share that person with Father Bills in Main Springs, so it's great. Father Bills also provides them with some financial support. So it's a nice team there. So we'll offset the cost of that program coordinator and the financial services. And Turning Point will provide emergency rent and utility assistance to Wareham residents. They're wonderful people over there, and I was picking their brain, and, and I said, you know, with all of these different things, different funding mechanisms coming as a result of the pandemic, I said, you're still filling a gap here in Wareham, and they said, yes, absolutely. And they anticipate that it's going to get even worse because we haven't seen the results of the eviction moratorium yet. So fortunately, this year, the town can help out a little bit more there, and I, I, you know, every month, these, these, these bills come in from Turning Point, and we see, you can see the addresses that, you know, they're helping and the people that they're helping. So it's, it's wonderful to think that, you know, we're keeping people in their apartments or their homes. And so it works. New this year, I'm working with Chief Correa on a domestic violence outreach program, and speaking with Mr. Sullivan about things to do with the CDBG grant this year, and understanding and knowing that there's a new police chief. I said, you know, do you think Walter has any needs? And he goes, well, yes. So I reached out to Chief Correa as part of a broader conversation about grant funding. And I, I, I decided that I think we can help him do outreach for domestic violence. So we're working on that closely. The program isn't completely built yet, but basically, it will allow the Wareham Police Department to bolster its support of victims of domestic violence in town. A portion will be used to offsets, offset the cost of a part-time outreach coordinator and for the purchase of supplies and materials for the program. The outreach coordinator, we're hoping, is going to be provided through a different organization or another organization that already works closely with the police department, or perhaps a graduate student intern from one of the local colleges. We're, so we're on that right now, trying to figure out the best way to, to get that, to work. Right before the meeting, I talked to Chief Correa, and he said, from June 1st, 2020 until today, there were 269 domestic violence-related arrests, and that's just arrests. Not all incidents of domestic violence where police were called. And he thought the number would triple if he had to consider all of the incidents in that time period. So it's just a little bit over a year. So our police department does a lot of these calls, and we're, Chief Correa is, is hoping to alleviate some of the stress and, you know, other things that come with that, and, and get people access to services. But it's too much for his officers to handle, and he needs an outreach coordinator. The offices are busy going to calls, and there just isn't time. So that's, that's what we're proposing for Public Social Services. And as an aside, these numbers can change between now and the grant application, so I don't, don't take these numbers to heart. They may stay the same, they may not. But as new information is available, we'll start building up the grant, and, and we'll land on a, on a, a budget that's set in stone. That's sort of all of the talking I have to do. I'm happy to answer any questions. And also, we can, I'm, I'm sorry, did you open the public hearing?
Yes.
So whenever you'd like to, you can call members of the audience to, to come up.
That's correct. Do you, yes, sir.
I want to ask a question. Okay, so, so are these the only three people that applied?
We did have one other application. The applicant, we ran into an issue with what's called, hang on, I need the right term, because the one that's about to come out of my mouth isn't going to be the right term.
Usually, we get a list that's pretty long.
Right, but-
And this is the only three things we have?
That's right.
Right.
So you had one that didn't meet their criteria?
Correct.
Correct.
The CDB, the CDBG grant cannot replace any public funds.
No.
The Council on Aging applied, but from what I, what we could see, the CDBG funding would have replaced formula fund grant money, which is the same as public funds. So that's an automatic disqualification. I spoke to Missy. I'm sorry, I'm not going to attempt her last name. I spoke to Missy. I, I want to help her build a program that we can, you know, fund in the future. We have also had some reporting requirements in prior grants that need to be met more efficiently in future grants, if DHCD is going to approve such a funding request. So that's another issue. But other than that, that was the only other application that we received.
Wow, that's just amazing, huh? I mean, usually, we get a list-
Six or eight-
That's why I got on the horn immediately, and I said, what happened?
Excuse me, through the chair, Mr. Meenies?
I mean, you know, the library didn't put in anything, I mean-
Yeah, I'm sorry. Mr. Meenies, do you have a question?
When did we put the RFP in the paper for public agencies or social?
The RFP was in the paper on Thursday, July 29. It was a legal advertisement that guarantees us a spot in the paper, unlike if we simply asked the paper to run a press release about the funding. So it's guaranteed there. I also called current entirely your grant recipients and other organizations that I knew did this type of work.
Right. I, I had reached out to the COA because they hadn't received any notice, so I think that's why they probably got a late-
I did not contact the organizations that have had trouble with reporting or spending CDBG funds in the past.
Well, I, I don't know. I just, again, I, I had reached out because I-
I understand.
I'm right there. And so the 29th of July, and it closed on the 16th of August, was it?
Yes.
This is pretty wild. So, so few.
Are you done, Mr. Meenies?
Yeah, I'm good.
I can't believe it.
Slaven, do you have questions?
More like a couple of suggestions at this point. The Council on Aging, if they get whatever issues resolve, they're in the process of becoming what they call an age-friendly community for Wareham.
A, I'm sorry.
Age-friendly community.
Age-friendly.
We, we've received that status from AARP already, which allows them to get certain grants and stuff. But I would think that there may be a possibility of that program also. You have to reach out to them to ask them where they're at with that. The other piece is that the Cape Verdean Cultural Council has taken over, been given the Oak Grove School, as you know.
Yep.
And they're looking to do a bunch of different social services out of there. And I'm sure they haven't applied because they don't know they could actually apply for this because of the timing. And you may want to look at that and get ahold of them because the school that's on the top floor may be moving to Buzzers Bay. So that means-
I've heard that.
So therefore, they would have even more room to offer. I spoke to them yesterday, and there was discussion about the different services, which would be social services, you know, work, training, et cetera.
At the point when we were researching this, I could not find a national objective that they would be able to meet. I didn't contact them personally, but in talking with Mr. Sullivan, who was very familiar with the situation, it was, I, I will keep them in mind, and I will reach out to them so we have a relationship with them. Absolutely.
Yeah, because I, I think what they discussed with me yesterday was not discussed with Derek Renilts beforehand. This is something that came up-
Do you have a contact from them that I could get from you later?
Yeah.
I'd love to talk to them, just-
Yeah, because I, I think this would fit right in with them.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Fits the, it fits the demographics, et cetera.
Perfect.
No, I, I'm good. I, I just wanted to ask, as normally, like I said, normally, we get a list, and I, and it's the only three pe, three requests here. I mean, sure, it upped the amounts of these individuals. The only problem is, next year, there may be 50 of these, and they might lose some of that money. And, you know, sometimes when they get, if you double what you, what you have, the Watch money or some of the Damien money, then next year, it doesn't work out because there's more, you need to spread it out a little thinner. And so they'll be, you know, happy with this this year, but they'll be wanting it next year, too. That's typically what happens, you know?
I certainly understand your concerns, and I address that with them. I, I have a long relationship with both of those organizations, so I can sort of speak to them frankly, and they've, they've been warned that this is not going to be an, an every-year thing, and they express their appreciation for helping them bridge the gap in this current climate.
Yeah, that's good. I mean, obviously, with the issues of COVID, the fact that, I mean, Damien Pantry has a lot more to do, and housing is certainly, it needs more things, but, you know, all the things need more stuff. I mean, there's, all the social services, in most cases, I mean, there are some property that, whatever, but in most cases, they're important to the community as a whole. They, they all do something, you know, that is important to somebody.
Absolutely.
You know, the library money was important to some people. This, you know, the, the money for the school over in, what do you call it, was important to some people. The Boys and Girls Club was important. So, you know, sometimes, so now we're spending it only on three people, and I just, I just can see this becoming problematic next, next year.
I understand your concern, and, and we're taking, we're making all efforts to avoid that. I don't like problems. I like to solve them before they arise.
Yeah, well, that's probably a good idea.
Mr. Titlebaum, do you have any questions?
Not a question, just an observation. I'm glad to see domestic violence back on here. Years ago, we did support, I think it was the Socio Women's Shelter.
Yes.
And that, for whatever reason, that, that didn't keep going. I don't know if there were accounting issues and so on and so forth. The state's making a huge push in, in all different sorts of arenas to deal with domestic violence. You know, we, we heard the statistics about the calls, 269, that's almost one a day. And those, those are arrests. Those aren't necessarily calls.
Correct. Those, those aren't incidences. Yep.
You know, handcuff, in the cruiser, go, and go see the judge in the morning. And, you know, it's, it's at a point now where, you know, they're making nurses take courses in recognizing domestic violence when they, when people come into the hospital. And it's not just ER nurses, it's every nurse. My girlfriend just had to do it. She hasn't worked professionally as a nurse since 1987, but here it is. She, she likes to keep her license, and, you know, this is, this is a new requirement. So the state's making a big push on this, and I'm glad to see one of this allocation there.
Thank you.
So interesting enough-
Yes, do, one more comment?
Yeah, I'm going to just follow up on him if you don't mind. The, the Socio Women's, we used to give them $5,000 a year, and it was one of the biggest fights on town meeting floor you ever saw. We'd pass, you know, a $35 million, $40 million budget like this, and we'd fight over $5,000 for Socio Women's Center. It was just crazy. It's, you know, some things are just, you just can't understand them. I don't know. But yeah, I, I get what you're saying, Peter.
And they're also, I know Chief Correa spoke with one of his contacts over there today to see if there's some way that we can partner. I was a part of that grant when we last funded them, and I am glad that right now, that what we're doing is a town, the town will be the sub-recipient, the town department will be the sub-recipient and not an outside organization. I think that'll make some of the issues we saw in prior years disappear.
I have a couple of comments. I had several conversations with Ms. Reben Buckminster because I was concerned about the length of the list going down from eight to three, and we discussed at length the Council on Aging issue, if you will, and the, that they simply would not be eligible this year. And that was explained to Missy. This has been a, this has been a godsend in many ways because it's money that we get to spend where we think we should. And obviously, social services, in many people's minds, are more important than sidewalks, and I have to tell you that I agree with that. So I'm glad that we were able to create some program that the chief has already spoken about publicly, and I think that's great. I'm now going to open the meeting to, yes?
Can I pause you for one second? I overlooked our third activity for the 21 grant application because I'm just so excited. We are looking to do an engineering study of 195 Main Street, and through you to Mr. Bowen, maybe when I'm done talking, if he could do a Cliff Notes version of why we're allowed to do this, I would- of why we're allowed to do this, I would really appreciate it because he did such a nice job last time. In Wareham Village, the town's proposing to complete an engineering study to determine the integrity of 195 Main Street and the abutting buildings with common walls. That's the building with, if you drive down Merchant's Way, has all the caution tape around it because it is falling backwards into the street. This was a way to potentially find an avenue for funding whatever comes next with that property. If we study it with CDBG funds, it's easier to use CDBG funds on it in the future. If that's, I'm probably oversimplifying. So what we're looking is, is at all, at all issues, you know, if, does the building need to be demolished? I think if you talk to our, our building commissioner, he would say yes, how about do it yesterday? But this will study everything the town can explore its options, including using future grant funds for the redevelopment of the property. And that's, that's what we're doing here is we're just, we're buying ourselves some time to, to look at the situation, see if there's anything that we can do from this end. And that's up to you, again, in the future, if you plan to use future CDBG funds on it.
The water keeps pouring into it like it does.
Mr. Bowen, do you care to speak on this?
Sorry.
We'd want to know what kind of shape it was in before we took any steps and have some estimate of cost, so.
Which building is this?
Thank you. It's the Cornwell Building. Okay, I'm.
The Cornwell Building, I think we'd be very careful. That building is repairable. I've spoke to David also, plus the owner of the property, so there's some, there's some issues there. I'm not sure we want to get involved with that. You got to look at that very closely.
Mr. Bowen and Ms. Buckminster will talk about that.
Yes.
Mr. Bowen, not now, later.
Oh, no, sure.
Okay.
We're not on the verge of bringing in the wrecking ball, so. If the private sector can handle its own responsibilities without resort to the public purse, I think everyone will be very happy.
Thank you. I'm going to open it to the public and I'm going to ask you if you choose to speak. You limit your speaking to about three or four minutes. Ms. Sharp, if you would come forward, identify yourself, please.
Jamie, I sent you contacts.
Thank you.
Really loud.
You got to pull that mic right up to your mouth.
Pull it right up to you. Linda Sharp, onset. Is that close enough?
Yes.
There you go.
That's close enough. Linda Sharp, onset. Do I address you first?
Yes.
Okay, I just wondered what the, when I read about this event, the public hearing in the paper, there was a name of Ms. Buckminster's board or organization that looks into this. What, what is that name?
You may answer.
Community Opportunities Group Incorporated. We're a Boston-based consulting firm. We've been running the town CDBG grants for the past five years or so after the town had a bit of a hiccup running them themselves. And we, we have been here since then, I guess.
Thank you.
So is the name anywhere on here?
On the package?
Does it say COG?
I'm not sure. I can give you one of my cards. I've written a bunch of these different documents for, for these hearings and I may not have listed it on the public hearing document, but I certainly can.
Community Opportunities.
The reason I ask is because when it was in the paper, it was, it was like, what, what is this? Is it a town group? Is it, you know, I was a little confused.
I think she has explained it to.
Yeah, I'm just saying for future reference, it might be good to know.
Yep.
Thank you.
And I have one more comment about the Bayview Park and the railing. This is such a hot issue in onset. I know nobody else cares about it, but if there is some way to get it out to the newspaper that there is actually a real plan to do something about that.
And they're sitting in the back and they're going to understand that it's coming out of the 2020 grant. Item number two, Bayview Park Sidewalk Replacements onset. This project will replace approximately 1,745 linear feet of existing sidewalks along the perimeter and within Bayview Park and Onset Village. As part of the sidewalk replacement, the location of three existing pathways within the park will be modified and one new pathway will be added. These challenges were devised, changes were devised both for aesthetic reasons and to improve accessibility. The railing along the street edge of the sidewalk on Onset Avenue will also be repaired or replaced.
Is there a timeframe for that?
As soon as the.
As soon as we possibly can. We're working on the engineering now. Once we know more about the project, then we'll be able to move forward with what I call the fun part. But it, unfortunately, it takes a while from when we write these grants, which this was back in March of 2020, to implementation. And then we had a pandemic in this, so I know, it's excruciating, but there's, there's help coming.
It is, it is funded and it is on the drawing board, is what we can say.
Yeah, so if there were a way to publicize some of this during the year so that people knew that somebody, somewhere was hearing them, that would be a great benefit, I think.
I think you're absolutely right.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who chooses to speak on this grant? I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to, a couple of things here. You had a scoring group?
I'm sorry?
You had a scoring group for the social services project?
We didn't score them this time because we had fewer than five applications.
Because I had told Mr. Sullivan I'd been interested in reviewing the applications.
Oh, by all means, that's going to happen then.
Huh?
We always need people for the scoring group. We normally always score them because we have more than we can fund, since we didn't. But I, now you're going to be invited.
Well, so, and on, on the Wareham Area Committee for the Homeless Grant, there will be money for emergency shelter for homeless people?
No, unfortunately. That's not a service that they provide, but what it does provide is.
But Father Bills does that.
They may, I.
They, they do. I, I've spoken with them and I spoke with Mr. Sullivan about this, so, you know, Father Bills used their own funds to do it and they've started to get tapped out, so. This was last year and we no longer do the lights, the nights of.
Hospitality.
Hospitality. So I think it's important to make sure there's some funds available for that. And I don't know how you work that out with.
May I make a comment on the nights of hospitality? I've spoken to several of the sponsors of the nights of hospitality and they basically are the churches in the town. There were several issues and I don't need to go into them, but it was deemed not safe to continue the program. Not safe for the attendees and certainly not safe for the people running the program and volunteering for the program. And I'm going to leave it at that.
No, that, that's fine. I'm, I'm just saying that.
Yep, that's fine.
I'd like to see some funds available for Father Bills to offset the cost related to housing some of the homeless during the exceptionally cold nights or severe weather nights.
Well, that's.
You know, and.
We need to talk about.
If I could, Father Bills knew of the RFP. They didn't apply separately. They did assist Turning Point with their application.
Well, you just said they work closely together.
Correct.
So, so I, you know, I'd like that to be understood. And just so we know, make sure I'm correct. We're just starting to expend the FY 2020 grant funds as of July 1, correct?
Somewhat correct. DHCD, because of the pandemic, allowed us to start spending administrative funds even before we had our grant agreement with DHCD in place. That's because since you have a full-time employee of the town who is completely funded through this grant, we were able to make sure that she was not going to be laid off or something like that. And that's something a lot of towns ran into when we had the gap in startup between the prior grants and the FY 20 grants due to the pandemic. Everybody called DHCD and said, whoa, whoa, you know, we're going to have problems here if we can't spend some, you know, administrative funds essentially before we're allowed, so that's.
Is the grant year July 1, 2021 through June 30?
No. I'd have to look. I, I'll get back to you on that. I believe they, they started it as of June 1st, but I don't want, I have a lot of dates in my head and I don't want to misspeak.
All right, that's all right.
I'll shoot you an email.
All set.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm going to call for a motion to close the hearing, please.
So may we.
Can I just say one more thing? I apologize. I know, I'm sorry. In the packet, there are, there's more information that I won't bore you with, but as far as the relationship of these grants to the Commonwealth Sustainable Development Principles and our established community development priorities and needs, that's good information in there. I won't read it verbatim for you tonight. And there's also in the back, current low and moderate income limits, they change every year. Just for your identification and anybody who's watching. Thank you for putting up with me.
You might want to give that information to the press because that's one of the issues, obviously, is that people feel that they're not fully informed of.
I understand, absolutely.
Thank you. Now, may I have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Wonderful. Mr. Slaven, roll call. Mr. Muniz?
Yes.
Yes, Whiteside, yes?
Patrick, yes.
Yes.
Yes. The hearing is now closed and I will accept a motion.
I move, we approve the filing of the FY 2021 Massachusetts CDBG Program Grant Application, the amount not to exceed $825,000.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by Mr. Trupiano and Mr. Titlebaum. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstaining, unanimous, and?
And I move, we authorize the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, the town administrator, to take all actions required relating to the submission of said grant application.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you want me to stay up here for the next? Okay. I think you just have the ECO designation again.
We already, we already.
Oh, beautiful.
We already did that.
I'll see myself out.
Yep.
All gone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I think we're done.
Yeah, we just have liaison. We didn't finish liaison reports, I don't think.
Welcome.
Um, liaison report?
Yeah.
Liaison report?
Yeah.
Alan was done.
I did mine.
He did his.
Yeah, you did Alan's.
So it's your turn.
I attended the planning board hearing the other night. Some of the proponents.
Can you be speaking outside, please? Because we can hear you. Thank you so much.
And some of the proponents didn't show up again, so citizens show up for a hearing and, you know, the applicant's not there. It's kind of not a, not a good thing.
Right.
And, you know, you see some frustration exhibited by people, townspeople trying to come here and state their support or otherwise. So, you know, I guess it is what it is and they'll handle it.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? No, I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Trupiano, any liaison reports?
Yeah, I got a couple of things. Okay, so I want to have placed on the agenda, if I can, to get the Board of Selectmen to vote, to send us through the chair some, a letter. There is a bill that's in committee that would allow 75% reimbursement for a police station and 95% reimbursement for a police fire station.
That's actually on the agenda for the sixth. I got that from Ms.
Yeah, well, I told her that I'd bring it up, but apparently she already took care of it.
Yeah, she took care of that.
All right, that's good. So it's on the agenda, we'll deal with it. That's very nice.
Thank you.
The second thing is, is the school, there's a little bit of a problem with furniture. So although they thought they might get into the building in October, it doesn't look like that's going to happen now because there are a lot of products are short. They're having difficulty getting stuff.
You're rich.
What?
I'm not talking to you.
Oh. They're having difficulty getting materials and I can, I can tell you that that's true. I was looking for some materials myself for a job this week and had great deal of difficulty trying to find four-inch pipe, which you would think would be everywhere. But after calling around about 50 places, I found one place that had two pieces, two 10-foot lengths, okay? And, and oh, it's all on order, everything's on order, but it ain't coming in. This is getting kind of crazy and the costs are skyrocketing for everybody on everything. I don't know if anybody's noticed that. I don't know, I go to the supermarket a lot where I have a large family and man, oh man, is it killing us. It, it's gotten out of control. I mean, you're going to pay over $8 to get a pound of bacon, for crying out loud, in some cases. It's just, it's too bad, but it's a tough time right now, what's going on. And I hope that it turns around. Wood is coming down a little bit, I want everybody to know. Plywood has dropped a little bit. Two-by-fours have dropped a little bit, so they're catching up with a little bit of that, but I don't know, man. It's getting more and more difficult all the time.
Thank you. Mr. Titlebaum?
That's it?
Uh, no, I don't have anything to report. I mean, as far as the WRA goes, you know, we're working with Tricia. She's still, I think, I think she's just wrapping up the interview phase with various selectmen, finance committees, school committee, you know, officials, so on and so forth. And she's going to come back and, and sort of give us a synopsis of what happened. She gave an update on Thursday to the WRA as well. That's all I've got.
The CDBG grant?
Oh, it's inside the folder.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I don't have any to report this evening. We are going to be going, as I said earlier, we are going to be meeting remotely on the 6th. Mr. Slaven, would you like me to move the time of the meeting earlier? It's Rosh Hashanah. It's sundown, but it's Rosh Hashanah.
The problem is it would be like 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock is when the holiday starts, for me. So if it's, if it's going to be a problem, I just won't be present.
Okay, thank you.
I can't, you know.
Yeah, I, I would like to be able to do something, but I don't, it's not reasonable to move this meeting more than half an hour, I don't think. Thank you.
Move it what?
Move the meeting more than half an hour.
Earlier.
Earlier.
Right, or have it another night.
Okay, I'm accepting a motion. Mr. Slaven.
Motion to adjourn.
Not debatable. All those in favor say aye.
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 Good night, Wareham. Thank you very much.